Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I will call this regular City Council meeting to order. If you'd all rise for the invocation that tonight will be led by Pastor Will Finnan from the Sebastian United Methodist Church.
As our invocation tonight, I'd like to read a prayer poem written by a British writer. It's sung in many churches across the world. But when you hear it, you might think it was written for a setting just like this. Let's pray. All who love and serve your city, all who bear its daily stress, all who cry for peace and justice, all who curse and all who bless. In your day of loss and sorrow, in your day of helpless strife, honor, peace, love retreating, seek the Lord, who is your life. For all days are days of judgment, and the Lord is waiting still, drawing near to all his friends who spurned him, offering peace to all who will. Holy God, shall yet our city be a city of despair? Come today, our judge, our glory, be its name; the Lord is there. May God's peace be with you this evening in all your business. Amen.
If you could remain standing for the pledge of allegiance that this evening will be led by Vice Mayor Kitchin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor and Vice Mayor. Roll call please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kitchin.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Councilmember Avino.
Here.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Here.
Thank you.
Council, are there any agenda modifications this evening?
I want to pull in a consent agenda item, item C, please.
Anything else? All right, roll call please. I'm sorry. Thank you. Time for proclamations, awards, and brief announcements. This evening we have a presentation by the Sebastian River Area Chamber of Commerce. Beth Mitchell? Getting ahead of myself on item C there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Hill, council members. I'm Beth Mitchell. I'm the president, CEO of the Sebastian River Area Chamber of Commerce. And tonight I have with me Nicole Holbrook, who is our Tourism Director. And we are going to do a short presentation, but I wanted to talk to you a little bit about tourism before we do that. Our visitors to Sebastian River area are very valuable. And the tourism numbers throughout the state of Florida have been trending very positively. In 2016, $11.6 billion was generated in local and state tax revenue from tourism. And in 2017, the state of Florida received approximately 116 million visitors. And for every 78 visitors in Florida, one tourism job is created. And our visitors spend, on average, $306 million per day in Florida. In Indian River County, the tourism tax collections are up by 17.3% for 2018. And locally, every visitor to our area generates approximately $111 to $125 per day, spending their money on hotel rooms, food, and transportation. Those numbers are from Visit Florida. So now, I'd like to turn the mic over to Nicole Holbrook, and she's going to show you how we are promoting the Sebastian River area. So please help me welcome Nicole.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you for having us. We're very excited to show you our new destination video. But before I do that, I just want to give you a little bit of history about the project. Our current destination video was created in 2008, so it's 10 years old. And as you know, technology has come so far with drones and HD quality, so we were really in need of a new video. So in February of 2017, I applied for a Visit Florida Small Business Grant in an effort to create a new destination video that would capture the beauty and diversity of our area while highlighting all of the activities and attractions that there are to do here in the Sebastian River area, giving potential visitors an authentic insight into our destination and the experiences that await. So last August, we found out that we were awarded the grant, which the funds would be used to match our Tourist Development Council advertising dollars to help make this project possible. We sent out a request for proposal to several local businesses and selected a company out of Melbourne, Tight Line Productions, to work with to produce our new video. Fast forward a few months of script writing, filming, and editing, and here we are with two new amazing videos. One is a one-minute sizzle video that kind of gives a glimpse into the Sebastian River area to music, and then we have a six-minute video to a script. The videos highlight our nature-based and recreational activities, including boating, fishing, kayaking, paddle boarding, airboat surfing, beach combing, hiking, biking, horseback riding, state parks, dining, local landmarks, skydiving, treasure museums, and our unique festivals. In regards to promotion, we'll be targeting in-state and out-of-state and international visitors looking to escape the hustle and bustle and have an authentic, off-the-beaten-path vacation right here in the Sebastian River area. The videos have been uploaded to our website in three locations. They're on our YouTube channel. They are on our digital kiosk inside our Pelican Porch Visitor Center, which is also a Visit Florida Certified Travel Information Center and an official Indian River Lagoon National Scenic Byway Welcome Center. And it's on our TV display that plays in a rotation with a few other historical videos about the area. After tonight, we're going to have it on our Facebook page, on our Instagram account. We're sending an email out to all of our tourism database followers and our membership. It'll be added to our Visit Florida profile, and we're hoping that they will share it with all of their, on all of their social media accounts as well. With that being said, I will show you.
Hidden on the treasure coast of Florida is the gem we call the Sebastian River area. Abundant wildlife and stunning scenery have brought visitors to Sebastian from around the world for many decades. With over 40,000 acres of conservation land, including waterways and trails, and a 233-mile National Scenic Byway, there are plenty of ways for explorers of all ages to experience the historical, natural, and recreational resources and special places right here in the Sebastian River area. Discover the untouched nature Sebastian has to offer. The Indian River Lagoon is home to over 4,000 species of plants, animals, fish, and birds, making it an estuary of national significance. Avid fishermen can indulge in the premier saltwater fishing spot on Florida's central east coast at the world-famous Sebastian Inlet. Just offshore, you'll find the waters rich with sport fish and challenging catches. If you like to keep your feet on dry land and still catch a trophy, the inlet jetties have plenty of snook, redfish, and other abundant species. The tidal cove is a great place for families and a good way to dip your toes into the diverse ecosystem up close and underwater. You might even spot some manatees. Adventures await for those eager to explore our waterways and warm, inviting shores. The surf at Sebastian Inlet is one of the most consistent surf breaks in the state and home to many annual surf contests. Our sands are perfect nesting habitat for sea turtles. You may even spot a nesting sea turtle on a ranger-led turtle walk during the summer months. Interested in seeing Sebastian from a different perspective, a bird's-eye view? Adventure seekers will get a thrill out of our world-class skydiving as they jump into the excitement from 13,000 feet up. When your feet hit the land, get them in the water and tour the intercoastal in style. Sebastian is a waterfront community just a short scenic drive away from the beautiful Atlantic beaches. Our unspoiled waterways offer the perfect scenery for pontoon boat and airboat tours, kayaking, paddle boarding, and jet skiing. Nature lovers will enjoy birding or hiking through America's first national wildlife refuge, Pelican Island, or exploring one of our many other preserves, perfect for horseback riding, biking, wildlife viewing, and more. A trip through the St. Sebastian River takes you back in time with its old Florida charm. Just west of Felsmere, indulge in the freshwater habitats of the stick marsh and lakes of Blue Cypress and Garcia, with beautiful cypress trees, waterfowl, and some of the best bass fishing that Florida has to offer. The very quaint, historical small town of Felsmere is a great place to spend an afternoon relishing in southern hospitality. How you navigate all of the bodies of water is an adventure of your own choosing. But if you like to go fast, have the wind in your face, and see lots of alligators, an airboat tour is a must-do. When it's time for lunch, dinner, or that special 5 o'clock somewhere libation, you'll find Sebastian and Felsmere have many unique local restaurants and watering holes that serve everything from freshly caught local seafood, gator tail, craft brews, and everything in between. Discover our local flavors at one of our many food festivals, where you can indulge in frog legs, shrimp, clams, and more. Stroll the galleries and museums and learn about the rare antiquities that have washed upon our shores. The shipwreck from the 1715 Spanish Plate Fleet left many treasures along our coast, and treasure hunters continue to search our waters for gold, jewelry, and other artifacts lost in history. And sometimes, they hit the jackpot. Come discover the natural splendor and rich history of the Sebastian River area, and you'll find simple pleasures and authentic treasures.
It was a pleasure working with Visit Florida, Tight Line Productions, and all of our tourism partners on this project. We're so proud of the finished product, and we encourage everyone to share our new destination videos with friends and family so they can experience the simple pleasures and authentic treasures of the Sebastian River area. Thank you.
Awesome. Well, that video is awesome, and your presentation is amazing. And I can't say enough for the Sebastian River Area Chamber of Commerce and what it does for this community, the hard work that you guys put out there, whether it be through the festivals, the events, the light-up night and the grilling night, and, you know, working with the business community. You guys are amazing, and I very much appreciate everything you do. I wonder if we could get that video for Channel 25, and we could potentially put that on a loop so we could play that, because I think that was a really good piece that shows a lot of what our area has to offer. All right, thank you so much. Leads us to brief announcements. Mr. Dodd.
Okay, it's Fourth of July time again. On the Fourth, there's a substance awareness 5K run from River View Park on any river drive. It starts at 6:00 AM. The Freedom Festivities in the River View Park run all day on July the Fourth. The fireworks is after sunset in the evening. The annual Fourth of July Parade starts at 8:30. It's 8:30 AM in the morning. So if you plan on participating in that, then you need to be, I guess, at your parade route somewhere between about 6:30 and 7:00, or 6:00 and 7:00, in order to line up for the parade. And it's a, that's a really neat affair. There's a lot going on in the park on the Fourth of July, and the parade's a really nice, really nice affair. It's attended by a lot of people, so thank you.
Best day of the year in Sebastian. It's really a fantastic activity, so thank you very much. Any other announcements from council members?
Yes, I just want to let the rest of the council know that on last Wednesday, I accepted from the VFW in Sebastian a check to the city of Sebastian in the amount of $1,000, which Michelle immediately took from my hands for the police department.
That's fantastic.
For shop with a cop and cope.
Great, great. Thank you. And thank you to the VFW? That was what you said?
Yes, the BFW.
Fantastic. Any other announcements? Hearing none, we'll move to item seven. And at this time, I'll recess the City Council meeting, and we'll reconvene as the Community Redevelopment Agency. I'll call for a motion on item seven B, please.
Show move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Thank you. Item C, Septic to Sewer Grant Program. Mr. Carlisle.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is a, an extension for a grantee that received $15,000 to convert from septic to sewer. They have the wet well in, and they're waiting for final certification, and then they will dismantle or deactivate their septic tank. They're asking for an extension to November 24, 2018, to allow them time to get all of their certifications and hookups done. And staff is recommending the approval, and the CRA board also approved this extension.
All right, thank you. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, move approval of item seven C.
Second.
Motion and second. Anyone from the public wish to speak on item seven C? Seeing none, counsel, any questions for staff or discussion? Any questions?
Oh, no.
All right, roll call, please.
Chairperson Kitchin.
Yes.
Mr. Dodd.
Yes.
Mr. Avino.
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin.
Yes.
Chairman Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Leads us to seven D, CRA Master Plan. Ms. Carlisle.
Mr. Mayor, we have been seeking direction from the CRA and the members of the CRA. I'll let Lisa discuss this a little bit, but we're wanting some direction on staff and what, from the council, on what you would like to see in the CRA with maybe some comments on the Motel Hotel.
Turn it over to Ms. Fraser.
Thank you. We, as part of the CRA Master Plan update, we have RMA assisting us in providing input and getting input from the public. And it was actually Councilmember Dodd's recommendation that these questions that were posed to the public in the public input workshop that occurred last Tuesday, that they be posed to the council as well as members of the chamber. So that is why we've brought them to you this evening. And we are not seeking your thoughts necessarily this evening. If you'd prefer to think about it and send it to us in an email, that would be acceptable also. But if you'd like to share your thoughts right now, I'm ready with my pen.
Okay, great, counsel. Do you have any discussion you want to share this evening?
I attended the first of the two meetings that they had last week. It was a very good session. Not a lot of people there in the first one. I don't know if the second one was attended any better or not, but there was a lot of discussion among the people who were there. And I did request they put this on agenda, because I felt like that sometimes the council gets things at the end and then says, oh, why is that in there? And these are the five categories that the consultant is kind of asking for people to provide, what-if, or one-statement-type input, you know, what should be preserved that's there and so forth. So I felt like there might be an opportunity for council members who wish to do that to respond to Lisa, to pass to the consultant with input that they may have in that regard. I think it was, it was a good session. They, they went through and talked about some, some really good things related to the CRA. And actually, what I ask is, why can't we have one of these sessions with the council or the workshop? And it's kind of too late in the process to plan a workshop with the council and do that. So this was almost a second alternative to that.
What kind of deadline are we looking at to getting the input? I mean, because we could have discussions, and, I mean, these are great questions, and, you know, if, I'm assuming council would like to individually caucus with Mr. Carlisle or yourself to discuss what we see, and then you can then also present them with what you feel you're getting from the members of the community who are affected by the CRA. So a discussion shouldn't sue on a one-to-one basis, or if council wishes to present some information or ideas this evening. I'm certainly open to that as well.
Yeah. I mean, a one-on-one discussion, you could do that, and you could sit down with her and say, okay, what are you hearing? Here's my thoughts. That would be fine, too. I just felt like that the council might want an opportunity to input at the beginning of the process instead of at the end of the process.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, what kind of, as I was saying, over the next week or so, should we get with you, whether it be in written form or face-to-face contact?
I would recommend, yes, in the next few weeks.
Next few weeks, okay.
But really, you know, we are now, the market assessment, I just received the first draft of it that I'll be reading in the next few days. But for the plan itself, that will be continuing to be worked on with a deadline that we have imposed for October, to come forward to you with the final draft. You will have a time before then to review a draft and then the final in October. But if you could get us, you know, something or your thoughts, or even meet with us and discuss that within the next few weeks or the next three weeks as well, so.
That sounds good, counsel. Everyone give it then? All right, thank you very much.
I look forward to it. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Is there any input from the public on item seven D? Hearing none. I will now adjourn the CRA, and I will call to order the City Council meeting. Which leads us to the consent agenda. Vice Mayor Kitchin has asked to pull item C. Are there any other items that council wishes to pull? I'll take a motion on the remainder.
Move approval of items A, B, and seven A, B, D, and F.
Second.
Motion and a second. And we have in there a resolution, so we will take a roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Avino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor.
Okay. The only reason I pulled item C, I have no problem with it. I just wanted to congratulate Lisa for filing and receiving that $50,000 grant in order to accomplish this feat.
Oh, well, good.
Move approval.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Motion and a second, and I'll take a roll call vote on this one as well. Good job.
Councilmember Avino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchin.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. That leads us to item 10, Committee Reports and Appointments. We have to fill a seat, two seats on the construction board. I'm sorry, one alternate seat on the construction board. We have one application, I believe, for that, and that's Ms. Paris. Am I correct in that?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, would you like to meet Ms. Paris? Ms. Paris, please come forward. Thank you very much. We appreciate your desire to serve Sebastian. Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Well, I'm approaching 30 years of citizenship and residency in a city I love, and I always feel very strongly about being engaged in my city, raising two children here, and knowing my community well. I'm also a businesswoman and a realtor, so I work very closely with the builders in the area and the homeowners, and just feel like I could be a positive contribution to the board.
Great, thank you so much. Any questions? Hearing none.
Move approval of Ms. Paris to the construction board appointment.
Second.
We have a consensus. Thank you very much for your desire to serve and enjoy, and congratulations. Counsel, we have item 10B, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. There are two positions.
Are we going to vote on that?
Beg your pardon?
Are we going to vote on that?
Well, we have to go through the, oh, no, you don't. As long as there's no other motions, their appointment is better. Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, we have two seats. Ms. White and Mr. Sims' seats are up, and they have shown their desire to continue serving the community and are the only applicants. I would make a motion to go ahead and reappoint Mrs. White and Mr. Sims to their seats, respectively.
Second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, congratulations, Mr. White and Mr. Sims. We appreciate your service to this community. Leads us to item 11, Public Hearings, the first, first item A, the first reading of ordinance number 0-18-06, a petition for voluntary annexation. Mr. Carlisle.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Fraser's here to go into detail of this and answer any questions you have, but this is a voluntary annexation of just over 66 acres just south of the Highlands, and the applicant has, again, voluntarily sought the city to annex into the city and will bring this. Any questions that you may have, we'll try to get them answered for you, and the ordinance is before you for consideration on first reading tonight.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
An ordinance to the city of Sebastian, Florida, providing for the voluntary annexation for land consisting of 66.87 acres, more or less, located south of Sebastian Highlands and the Elk Cam Drainage Right-Away, west of vacant lands, north of CR 510, and east of Sebastian River Water Control District Canal, providing for the extension of the corporate limits and boundaries thereof, providing for interim land use and zoning classification, providing for Scrivener's heirs, providing for conflict and severability, and providing for an effective date. Sir.
Great, thank you. Staff presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As stated, this is a voluntary annexation, and it is 66.87 acres, and it is located south of the city, but it is countervenus to the city boundary. The applicant, currently, it's vacant agricultural land. They do run cattle on it, but it is in unincorporated Indian River County, and they desire to come into the city. It is within the service boundaries of the municipal service area, and they have provided capacity concurrent with the county's utility services. At this point, they are asking for consideration of a land use change concurrent with the annexation request. However, they will be coming in as an agricultural land under the Indian River County zoning and hold the land in that manner until such time as they choose to move forward with any type of development. I think it's important to note that the 510 corridor has been planned and programmed through the DOT for widening and improvement and will become a major truck route consisting of 512 from, from the freeway to 510, and then going south on 82nd Avenue. DOT is currently purchasing right-of-way north from 60 up 82nd Avenue all the way up to 510. So this piece of property will become quite an important corner intersection property, and that is why they are requesting, well, you'll take it on next, the land use designation that they are requesting. We feel, the staff feels that they have provided us with the concurrency evaluation that we request for annexations. They have also provided us with a good fiscal analysis on a lot of assumptions regarding commercial use. We want the council to also be aware that our comprehensive plan policies recognize this annexation of existing agricultural lands until such a time that urban growth is contiguous and agricultural activities are no longer economically sustainable. So our policies are in place for the city's comp plan, so the staff recommends that we move for approval of this annexation request. We are asking that the public hearing be set for August 8th in order to give time for the land use consideration to be sent up to the state and come back and be approved consistently with, with the annexation.
All right, thank you very much. Counsel, do you have a motion on this item, or would we like to go ahead and get some public input on it first?
Mr. Mayor, move approval of item 11A.
Second. Motion and second by Councilmember Avino. Again, I did that, didn't I? Wrong, did I say that incorrectly again? I'm sorry. Avino.
You got it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on item 11A? All right, seeing none, counsel, do you have any questions of staff? Roll call, please.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchin.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Avino.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to now open the public hearing on item 11B, first reading and public hearing for transmittal to DEO. Ms. Carlisle.
Mr. Mayor, this is a large-scale land use change, and it is a petition by the Graves Brothers for the property that you just discussed with the ordinance for the annexation, and they are asking for a designation of commercial general. And I'll provide, Ms. Fraser can provide any exact details that you need, but staff is requesting that the board consider this. And I'll provide, uh, Ms. Frazier can provide any, um, exact details that you need, but staff is requesting that the board, um, consider this ordinance to be, or this land use change to be submitted to DEO for their comments.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Stokes, would you like to read?
Yes. An ordinance of the city of Sebastian, Florida relating to the comprehensive plan, amending the future land use map by establishing a land use classification of CG, commercial general, for annexed land with a prior county land use designation of R rural, one unit per acre. On property consisting of sixty-seven acres, more or less, located on Eighty-Fifth Street, County Road five-ten, in the eighty-four-hundred block south of the Elcam Waterway and La Conia Street in the vicinity of the Treasure Coast Elementary School. Authorizing findings and administrative actions, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for Scrivener's errors, providing for an effective date, and providing for an adoption schedule.
All right, thank you. I'll assume, Mr. Carlo, that Ms. Frazier's gonna be going ahead and giving us a presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
This, um, property as previously described is located just south of the city, north of five-ten. As previously discussed, it is at a, a future important, um, intersection with the improvements the DOT are, are putting in place for five-ten and Eighty-Second Avenue. Hence, the request for a more higher intensity use than may be given in a normal situation. Staff does support that request because our comp plan clearly identifies the need for more commercial and industrial use. Our comp plan, um, clearly states that the city is, um, has far less, um, if you look at item, I'm sorry, I'm generally better about this. Um, uh, in our twenty-twenty-five growth, we are showing that the, um, the state, or the, the city actually has less commercial acreage, um, projected than the state, um, has under their, under their needs. And so we have encouraged, um, this applicant to seek the commercial general land use. They have provided us once again with concurrent, concurrency analysis. And, uh, we ask for your permission to transmit it to DEO.
All right, thank you very much for that. Now, we're gonna move to public input on this. I have, uh, two requests, uh, for public input, and once I'm done with these ones, I will go ahead and just ask for anyone from the public who wishes to speak. Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Hannett. And just so everyone knows, we have a five-minute time limit, uh, to speak and it must be on, uh, on the item. Welcome, sir.
Uh, my name is Edward Hannett. I'm, uh, representing, uh, the, uh, state of Valerie Hannett. Uh, we're the owners at seven-sixty-two Concha Drive, Sebastian, uh, and in response to the, uh, notice hearing, uh, we would like, uh, state that we are against the rezoning of the north leg of the subject parcel that crosses the waterways and backs onto our property. Uh, currently during heavy rainstorms, our backyards flood from the flow of water coming down from the Elcam Dam. This development will change the topography and drainage of our current wetlands and increase the volume of water directed to our, uh, our land and the neighbors', uh, backyards. And a minimal, the north leg of this subject parcel should be left undeveloped to allow excess rain flows to continue to be absorbed as it has in the past. So also should be considered that the wetlands and canal, uh, which borders our backyard provide habitat for various wildlife, including but not limited to birds, fish, raccoons, river otters, alligators, manatee, wild boar, bobcats. Please require environmental impact surveys be completed on this parcel and we are confident that this portion of the parcel will not be disturbed or developed. We're currently, uh, out of state and cannot attend the hearing, but, uh, would appreciate the council's consideration on this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Did you state your name?
My name is Edward Hannett.
I beg your pardon?
Edward Hannett.
And you live in Sebastian?
Uh, no, I live in Orlando, but I'm representing, uh, this is my mother's property. Uh, her name is Valerie Hannett.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Hocker? Ben, Ben Hocker?
Evening, councilman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what I'm asking here, first of all, I'm representing the Sebastian property owners. We're out looking for members. It's ten dollars a year. We need that.
Ben.
Well.
Sir.
The Board of Director, oh, Ben Hocker, Sebastian.
And please keep to this subject, the subject of the rezoning. That's what we're talking about. You signed up to speak on?
Oh, I thought that was to get notified of anything coming in the future.
I'll call you back up during public input.
I apologize.
That's quite all right, sir. Thank you very much. We'll talk to you later. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak on item eleven B? Yes, ma'am, please come forward. That's okay. That's, no, it's not a problem. Please, we, we welcome your input.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Susanna Quintana and I recently purchased a house right on seven-six-six Concha Drive. And I want to stay here for the record that I am completely against it because that is basically the same, uh, basically the same, uh, concern that Mr. Hayden had previously. Uh, it's a major, um, area where there's a lot of wildlife and it would be a shame to build anything other than the trees that they have back there. We, there is a family of flamingos that come to visit us and they are free to roam around the neighborhood, the entire neighborhood. They come out from there, they go around and they, on a weekly basis, we see them. Uh, and, uh, you know, there's, like Mr. Hayden said, there is a lot of wildlife. And it's, it would be a shame to change that. So I am one hundred and ten percent against this development, at least in that area. Because I, I don't know, today I took a ride around where, um, uh, Treasure Coast Elementary is and honestly, I, I saw a huge piece of land and I think, I believe it's, uh, sixty-seven acres, but, uh, I don't know how omitting that, you know, that the littles, on the map, as you have it here, there is this part that reaches to this area. So if there is any way, you know, any possible way that the owners can donate that area and keep it from that particular space from being developed. Because it's, uh, it will not, it will not be good for the, you know, for, for, you know, the way it's set up now is nice and calm. No one gets there, so the wildlife is completely one hundred percent, uh, undisturbed. And, um, you know, it's, it will be, if that is possible for the owners to consider donating a small, it's, it's a small, um, edge that it will be, um, in question.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We appreciate you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Dr. Ring, four-oh-seven Queryling here in Sebastian. This is the first time I'm hearing about this, but, um, uh, I would be in favor of it. Especially the, um, the commercial part because isn't that the part where they're going to put the bus depot right next door there? That corner is, isn't that where the county has a bus depot going in? But on the other hand, I really do think we need to keep the, um, wetlands conserved. So when you do do this, please, I agree with them wholeheartedly that we need the wetlands reserved. And maybe we can make a park out of it because I thought we needed parkland also. Don't know, just thought, I, I'm so, I'm for it, but please be very cautious and consider it, uh, the wetlands and the environment. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this issue? Yes, sir.
Good evening, councilmen. Uh, my name is Joseph Shulkey. I'm Shulkey Villanstadard, River Beach, Florida. I'm a resident of the city of Sebastian. I'm here representing Graves Brothers and Jeff Bass. Um, I'd like to answer any questions you may have, if you have any, but I also wanna try to alleviate some of the concerns of the, uh, the people that came up and spoke just a moment ago. Um, I, I wanna talk about the drainage just, uh, briefly. Currently in this site and a lot of these sites around this area, especially just to the south of the, uh, Sebastian Creek or agricultural properties, these are all abandoned groves with ridge and furrow. Almost every drop of rain goes from these sites right into the creek. And, uh, the fellow that is, uh, concerned about, uh, the stormwater and additional volumes of water going to the river, um, I can tell you, this project is not only in the city, will be in the city of Sebastian, but we're in the Sebastian River Improvement District, which has very, very strict criteria on development as far as your discharge rates. Will limit it two inches in any twenty-four hour period for the, for twenty-five year storm. We have to hold seven and a half inches on the site in a twenty-five year storm. So y- your, your stormwater is gonna actually be, uh, considerably, uh, lessened. There'll be less volume going in. So I, when the property is developed, it will actually, uh, decrease some of the drainage issues in that river, in that area. Um, as far as the environment and, and, and the wetlands and stuff like that, uh, currently, this property is adjacent to the city, the confluence of the Elcam Waterway, Sebastian Prong, Lateral Sea. There is, um, anywhere from two-hundred-and-fifteen to two-hundred-and-sixty foot of right-of-way between this property and the Highlands lots in that's that district right-of-way. Um, then you have the existing vegetation, kind of wetland area on the fringe of our property, which I would estimate based on areas, another two-hundred feet. That, that's not gonna be developed. I mean, we have to go, and I wanna go on record, before we do any development, we have to do environmental impact analysis. We have to go through permitting with the Corps, Saint John's, Sebastian River Improvement District, as well as our own city staff. And you're gonna find that, um, I, I, I doubt you would even be able to see the commercial development from the houses, uh, to the north. So I just wanna kinda alleviate maybe some of the concerns, um, that, that they brought up and, uh, go on record as saying that. So other than that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll, I'll sit down and let you get back to your business.
Great, thank you very much. Does anyone have, uh, questions at this moment for Mr. Shulkey?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this item? All right, hearing none. I will ask for staff to sum it up.
Thank you. Um, staff has nothing more to add. Um, I was going to alleviate some of the concerns, but Mr. Shulkey did handle that quite well. And so staff recommends approval of ordinance O-eighteen-oh-seven on first reading and authorize transmitted to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for their comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frazier. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Council, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of item eleven B.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any questions or statements from councilmembers?
No, I, I, this is, this is, uh, uh, this is a great, great piece of property for the city and I think the city staff was very clear in what the comp plan says and also with the fact that Sebastian does not have a lot of space to grow and we don't have very much commercial property. Uh, and this is gonna be a prime commercial corridor. Uh, I think the MPO this morning actually approved the long-range plans that includes both of those highway constructions on it, the five-ten and the Eighty-Second Avenue. So, uh, these things are gonna happen and this is a great piece of property to bring commercial development in Sebastian, so. And all of those fears about the, the, I think as Mr. Shulkey said, there's absolutely no way they're gonna be able to destroy the wetlands. There's plenty of organizations that are gonna, they're gonna stop them from doing that. So, um, it'll, it'll have to go through a large approval process, uh, to protect that. And I think that approval process has worked in the past and it will continue to work.
I would concur. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Avino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Leads us to item eleven C, second reading and public hearing ordinance number O-dash-eighteen-dash-zero-one. Mr. Stokes?
An ordinance of the city of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida relating to medical marijuana treatment centers, rescinding ordinance O-dash-seventeen-dash-zero-one, amending the land development code, article twenty-two, language and definitions, amending article five zoning district regulations, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for codification, providing for Scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date.
All right, thank you. Ms. Carlo.
Mr. Mayor, this is the second reading of a, of the ordinance that you all had asked to be brought back with some modifications. Uh, the city attorney and city staff has worked to try to meet the request of city council to provide direction on, in this ordinance of where and to be consistent with the enacting or, uh, legislation from the state legislature. We provided you with a map of a thousand feet from the different organizations, schools, parks, and churches. At the request of Councilmember Dodd, we did a second map of five-hundred feet. So it is a, it is a desire of, of staff to have direction from the, or the, the city council give us a direction on if there's any other additional amendments. If city council wants to adopt it as written, you have the opportunity to make some various changes to the ordinance. If it's too dr- if it's too drastic, then as the city attorney has said, it would have to be redrafted. But in this case, you have several options available to you to consider to remain within the framework of the second reading of this ordinance. With that, I'll open it up to questions from council.
All right, very good. Uh, first I wanna go ahead and get, get input from the public on this issue. I, I would first say, thank you, Councilmember Dodd. I do appreciate your request for the map to, uh, to show what the five-hundred-foot buffer would be. Uh, it does, they're, they're drastically different. Uh, the, the thousand-foot buffer clearly zones out almost any areas that it could possibly, uh, put a dispensary. Now, five-hundred feet seems to be opening up quite a bit. So I think, uh, I would be in solid favor of this ordinance with something in between those two. Um, and, and, you know, I, I, I think that, that we could make that work. Our, our goal on this council has not been from the beginning to, to not allow them, but to have some control over them and to make sure that we don't allow the dis- the dispensaries to sort of run amok. And I think that this, this ordinance, uh, thank you, Mr. Stokes, for writing it, um, does a great job of doing it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Well, yeah, a- as I remember our, I mean, we, this goes back a long time, I think.
Right.
A year and a half from now, a year and a half ago, we, we approved, uh, an ordinance that was a lot more open than this. And when it came back, uh, after the state legislature did their gamesmanship with drugstore versus not drugstore and it came back to us, um, the conversations, as I remember it, that we had, um, and, and I kind of initiated, uh, questioning whether we should allow drugstores and medical marijuana dispensaries on Indian River Drive and the CRA because I felt like that was kinda close to what might be an entertainment district. And in this rewrite, they have removed that, so the Indian River Drive area does not include authorization for drugstores or medical marijuana. Um, the, I, I felt that the thousand-foot limitation was too, I, I, I've not sensed any, um, any attempt by the council to limit the distribution of medical marijuana, and I felt like the thousand-foot radius limited it too much. Um, I mean, I went back and looked at the, at the four precincts in Sebastian and seventy percent of the people that voted in those four precincts voted for Donald Trump for president and voted for medical marijuana. Uh, that's a telling tale, uh, when you get people who vote for Donald Trump for president but also support medical marijuana.
Maybe they were all high.
And so, um.
Just kidding.
This isn't a political statement. I'm just trying to tell you that, that it, it's, medical marijuana is something that no matter where it goes on the ballot, it goes, it comes off the ballot with a, a vast majority of the voters agreeing to it. And I, I understand it's a Schedule I federal law and I understand that officers of the court have a real stomachache with saying that we can circumvent federal law, but quite frankly, I think federal law is wrong in this case. Um, and, and I think that the voters were very clear. So I, I, I prefer the five-hundred-foot radius. I think it, it does limit it. If you look at these areas, the one thing the map doesn't do is, is highlight the places where it's available because it's only available in certain zoning districts. So if you go down five-twelve, there's places that don't have a circle around it that you really can't do a dispensary because it's not within the five-twelve district. They're outside the five-twelve district. So there are some places along five-twelve, for example, where there are currently strip centers that, in which someone could open a medical marijuana shop. Um, there's not a gigantic amount of them. Uh, and I, my preference would be that, and that we don't limit it, definitely don't limit it to a thousand feet. That kinda shuts it down to two or three places in town.
Right.
And I think that's just too cumbersome. Five-hundred feet is the state law. So if we don't include any separation in our ordinance, then we have to live by state law and state law is five-hundred feet, correct?
Uh, state law is five-hundred feet, but only from public and private schools.
Okay, so we.
Doesn't include the daycares, the childcare centers, the parks, the churches, anything. So that's where we added to it.
So, so we do need to include it then, to include those other organizations, which is fine with me, but I think the five-hundred-foot buffer is sufficient to protect us. And I think the voters were clear. Uh, they want medical marijuana facilities to be made available to people who need them. They want medical marijuana facilities to be made available to people who need them. We can't legislate morality. We can't stop doctors from certifying people, just like we can't stop doctors from writing prescriptions for OxyContin, you know? So, and we don't shut down drugstores because doctors write prescriptions for OxyContin. So, I think it's a clear, we need to clearly approve something that provides an opportunity for those facilities to be here.
Would you like to make a motion to that effect?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of item 11C, and I'd also like to strike the public or private park out of there and make it 500 feet.
I was going to say that. Strike out that whole paragraph. Right? The middle paragraph?
Public or private park, playground I'm okay with.
Yeah, oh, well.
You know?
So, you changed it to 500 feet every place that's a thousand?
500 feet and remove the public or private park.
I'll second that.
I don't...
All right, is there anyone from the public who wishes to add input? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Andrea Coy, 501 Palm Avenue, Sebastian. Thank you, Mr. Dodd, for giving us the history of this issue and you very adequately portrayed it. I was prepared to come read you the riot act when I saw that map, because that definitely was not anything we discussed initially. It's not what the county thought we were going to do. It's not what we promised the public and it definitely wasn't what the public asked us to do. So, thank you for honoring all of that and thank you for looking at the parks. There, there's a lot of misconception about medical marijuana and it's not about getting high, folks. If I had the desire to get high, I would go to Colorado or Amsterdam where it's legal. You can do that. It's a totally different product. So, the fears that people have about medical marijuana are totally bogus and based on ignorance of the truth. If you know anything about medical marijuana, you know it is beneficial to cancer patients, Alzheimer's, all of the people. And if you've never met or dealt with someone who's had one of these conditions, I mean, I don't know where you've been, because medical marijuana is helping a lot of people. We need to make it available. This is not something kids are going to get their hands on, nor do they want it. They want the good stuff, folks. They're going to be out on the street looking for the stuff that has THC in it that gets them high. Medical marijuana doesn't have THC, the content that street marijuana and the stuff that gets you high does. So, I'm hoping that you will approve it. I think that's an excellent route to take. I think you're being cautious enough to protect. And I just wanted to mention, what you do tonight affects not only the medical marijuana dispensaries, but the future of your pharmacies. What you're doing to marijuana dispensaries, medical marijuana dispensaries, you are doing to every pharmacy in the area. So, if, say, the Publix, if you look at the 500-foot map and you see the Publix Pharmacy out on 512, if for some reason that went out of business and you left the parks in there, you would not be able to replace it. There, you'd have a big, old shopping mall and not be able to replace that pharmacy because of the rule that you made. So, it will affect every other pharmacy who may or may not want to come in, or every pharmacy that you are grandfathering based on this map. So, I strongly support the motion that's on the floor and was made. Thank you for listening. Please pass this. I have a lot better things to do with my time now that I'm retired. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Harker?
Ben Harker, City of Sebastian. In your book, your memos that you have, it states that under the Senate Bill 8-A, we can not incorporate or put in dispensaries or pharmacies. Now, the court ruling in Florida, initially when this went through, there was no smoking of the medical marijuana. Now, you tell me how a picture of a bud grown in a backyard compared to somebody growing it in a state or county or federal removes the PCBs. You're getting pills in oil form, three versions, it's e-smokeable, a doctor will write you a prescription, he can be your next-door neighbor and have a doctor's office and write a prescription. The dispensary in Orlando will even deliver it to your home. It's not covered under any insurances. Now, the court, Florida banned the smokable marijuana. It was overturned in the courts. Why don't we just take a look at the state of Florida, Indian River County and the other counties, put this on a moratorium until there's some firm, more decisive action? I'm not saying anything against the marijuana. It's just that it seems it's floating in the air, nobody knowing which way to go. I'm going to also comment on your distance from schools, et cetera. Couple of members of the council here might remember the alcohol law for dispensing alcohol or having a bar or a restaurant serving alcohol adjacent to a church. Well, we've got a church, we changed our ordinance. I don't think we're, I don't even think we're 100 feet away from the church, from the property that we're allowing alcohol to be served. So, you've got a precedent of alcohol and a church on the record here. You're talking now making a 500 or 1,000-foot distinction between where you can do this and where you can do that. You might want to ask the attorney about if you're going to say 1,000 feet, I might bring up the 100 feet that we allow liquor being sold next to churches and schools. I think we ought to just put it on a moratorium for a while, just to see what the county, the state, and the government decides to do. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public? Yes, sir.
My name's Arnold Deal. I'm a resident of 418 Arbor Street, been a homeowner in Sebastian for 22 years. I want to commend and thank Mr. Dodd and Mr. McPartlin for seeing things a little bit more clearly. As you know, in November 2018, the voters approved by 71% Amendment 2. And the SBA Day has been used to implement Amendment 2. My contention with the ordinance was 1,000 feet, which is, makes the restrictions just extreme. There's very few places left. And the fact of the parks. The parks are not in SBA Day implementation plan and neither is the 1,000 feet. It's 500 feet and I agree that I really would wish that you guys would go with that. The patients in Sebastian have to go to Vero Beach for the medical cannabis as it is now, the one dispensary that was grandfathered in. They run out frequently right now. And as was mentioned, they, some dispensaries do deliver, but that puts the burden on the sick patients to pay for that extra delivery that is also not covered by insurance. So, they're paying for the product, paying for the delivery, and a lot of people just will not get their medicine if we have to go that way. So, I thank you for wanting to make this available to the people of Sebastian. And I think it would be terrible to make the 1,000 feet and have that affect our pharmacies too, because Sebastian grows a little bit, we're going to have to have some new pharmacies, there's going to be no place left for them. So, there's a lot of retirement here in Sebastian and South Florida altogether. We want to take care of our people as they age and preferably to do it in its natural way with the medical cannabis, but they're going to need pharmacies too. So, I sure hope you follow the SBA Day as it's written by the state. And just to mention, for some of the people in the audience who didn't know, TAC is allowed in medical cannabis. It's not just CBD. And so far as smoking, there is a lawsuit out that won and there's a stay right now on the smoking situation. And the reason some people may need to smoke it is a good friend of mine who is president of Florida Cannabis Action Network for many years, she was the one that was in the lawsuit with John Morgan, to be able to smoke it, because her problem is ALS. ALS is something that when you die of ALS, you die of pretty much drowning in your own saliva, because you can't swallow anymore. So, for her, the oils, any of the other ways does not give her what they call cotton mouth, which dries up that saliva, which has extended her life. She was diagnosed in 1986 with ALS and still alive today, goes to Tallahassee with me all the time to lobby. And that's very instrumental. So, some people may need that smoking, even though it doesn't sound like it would be medicine. Some people with a particular illness may need it that way. So, to worry about banning it or that kind of a thing, the doctors know what they're doing. There are certain people and patients who may need that. But I want to thank you for going the direction you're going and it sounds like you're doing the right thing. I want to thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak on this issue? All right, hearing none. Counsel, going through the map, taking out the parks is very, very minimal in where they could put them. I have no problem with doing that. It's such a small amount of spaces that would be able to add additional. One of the ones that are in particular important is what Ms. Coy did bring up, the corner there at 510 and 512 would be available. The question I would have is, though, if we were to go ahead and remove that, apparently we're considering the airport property to be a city park. Is that correct?
It's recreational. We have the golf course, which is recreational.
So, so, would then the city be required to allow for, to lease our buildings or facilities in the industrial side along Roseland Road or even by the golf course for the dispensaries? Would we be required if we don't officially eliminate the, it actually being on city property? And it's just a question, because I think that we, we're going a little bit beyond, you know, allowing the dispensaries, which I agree 100% with, and this council, I believe, wants to move in that direction. But does the city want to be in the business of leasing our property for the use of medical dispensaries when it is in violation of federal law? That's...
Wouldn't we be...
Well, the one thing I don't believe that the zoning at the airport allows for commercial, I think it's industrial.
Well, in addition, that property is very heavily restricted by the FAA and since marijuana is still illegal at the federal level, the FAA would never let us do it.
Okay, perfect.
Now, the property that's on the northwest side that borders the airport, is that commercial general property? I'm trying to decipher the colors on the map. The airport property itself and the golf course, and then the property that's around the airport, is that commercial general?
If you'd just bear with me one second.
Okay.
I believe that's preserved. Is that...
It looks like the same color as commercial general. I can't really, as my wife says, I'm colorblind about half the time, so. So, if that's commercial general, then that would, unless the FAA rules would prohibit it, that would open it up.
Oh, that's actually airport property. That's airport property itself.
That's all airport property.
That's all airport property? Okay. So, the FAA rules may...
Yeah, I mean, that's all, that's all airport, that whole section there. So, I think the FAA would regulate that.
Okay.
Do we want to, just to be careful in the ordinance, to say something about the airport or leave it as it is?
Well, it would be city property and we don't have to lease city property if we don't want to. I mean, they have to, you know? We're not going to lease city property to someone that would open a dispensary, I wouldn't think. I'm certainly not going to approve that.
Okay. Any other discussion by council? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Avino's absent. Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you. There being no unfinished business, we'll move to public input. Mr. Harker, this is when you can come to us and bring forward whatever information it is you wish to discuss that is not currently on the agenda. And you have 4 minutes and 20 seconds left.
Oh, all right. Ben Harker, Sebastian. Really quick, I'm a director with the Sebastian Property Owners. I was elected to read this little statement. This is agreed upon by the directors. One, we need new members. You can give me a call, 388-9601, leave a message. And this is to the Sebastian Mayor Hill, Vice Mayor Mary Kitchen, council members Dodd, Levino, and McFarland, from the Board of Directors of the Sebastian Property Owners Association. Now, this could pertain to any annexation, but they used one as an example. The subject is the annexation and rezoning of 182 acres of vacant land. Again, could be any land in the future, any other items, or other development or proposed ordinance, O-1803, petition for the voluntary annexation Spiritus Sebastian. We're concerned about the annexation, rezoning, and request that you encourage vigorously an impartial debate by your constituents. Many of our residents and affected homeowners in the area have voiced disapproval of the proposal and believe it will ultimately have a negative effect on our community. Again, this would pertain to not only this, but any other annexation. We would like your assistance regarding the following. One, that this will provide a positive cash flow for the taxpayers of Sebastian. There'll be no Section 8 housing. That additional railroad crossings will be added that can do more than handle only alternative one-way traffic. That's that one crossing down there. That you consider the impact of funneling 2,000 new residents through Del Monte Street and Bailey Drive Schuman. That you maintain a substantial police budget in present in the area. That you consider the effect on our already limited boat ramps and other public facilities. That you maintain stricter adherence to code violations, especially the addition of outbuildings on the properties. We respectfully request that a member of our board be allowed to attend any meeting with staff concerning this proposal, meaning future annexation. Now, for me, since I said that. One, the Chamber of Commerce, there's a new sign-up. The city put in 12 parking spaces. In the Chamber of Commerce lease, they were to put it in. We put them in. There's now a sign in that parking lot that says chamber pump, chamber parking only. What's wrong with that picture? We have a restroom, $306,000 at the working waterfront. It's still locked. I guess it's done, maybe not. Maybe we're waiting for something. The faucets? I don't know. There's a rumor going around that only the Fisherman Commercial will have a key to it. I don't know whether that's fact or not. I'm asking, when are you going to open it up? Either or, to the fishermen or to the public. You're going to repave Indian River Drive. How about putting a bike path along there, since we're getting massive amounts of bicyclists up and down our scenic roadway? Next one, Mr. Hill. You asked our former city manager, where is the lower handicap deck on the ramps at the yacht club? I noticed the city put an extra ladder on that side. Now, that doesn't help the handicap much. I don't know what the answer is. I don't even know if you got the answer. By the way, Main Street ramp again is filled with sand. You back your boat in like this. We have a signed ordinance. We were going to discuss it and change it, about putting flags up for new businesses, only 30 or 60 days, I believe. If you go down Main Street, you'll see the city put up flags at the airport, advertising a business.
You have about 20 seconds, ma'am.
Okay. FEMA, we moved our emergency fund down to 3.5 million dollars, because we took a million and a half out because of the docks, et cetera.
He shook his head that he likely won't be attending.
That's my birthday. I will not be in attendance. I'm sorry.
Oh, he's not attending?
Right. That makes you.
Sorry, Linda.
Yes. Counsel, does anyone have any potential resolutions to be submitted to the Florida League of Cities for their bylaws? All right. None. Thank you very much for that. And then, item B, consider cancellation of the June 27 meeting, Mr. Carlisle.
Do we have any resolutions?
Yeah. The, the, the Florida League of Cities, every year asks municipalities to come up with potential resolutions to, that affect their bylaws.
So, are we gonna do that at a separate meeting?
No. The resolutions are what you're gonna be voting on. So, if we don't...
We're not gonna present.
We're not gonna present any resolutions.
Okay.
They'll all be in a nice, big, thick book like this, that I'm sure you'll read every page of, and then...
Okay. Nothing from Sebastian.
Yeah. All right. Mr. Carlisle, 14B.
Mr. Mayor, in discussing with staff, it appears there's not any pressing items for the second meeting in June, and we'd ask the board, rather than just bring everybody in to bring them into call roll, that we would ask the board to cancel that, the second meeting in June.
All right. Thank you. Move to cancel the meeting.
I move we cancel.
I'll second that, then. Anyone from the public wish to speak about this item? I've seen all those in papers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Thank you. Item 15, Mr. Stokes?
Nothing new.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carlisle?
Just to wanna update the, the city council mayor on an item that the county commission has voted on. You may be aware, but for the public's edification, they have voted to do the dispute resolution regarding the fire marshal. And what that will entail is in July, the county commission will, may adopt a resolution to enact that program, which then will enact, the county manager and myself to sit down and discuss options to try to facilitate a, an amicable solution to this issue. If that is not successful, then it will require a joint meeting between the city council and the county commission. If they can't find a resolution there, then it would go to arbitration. Hopefully, that Mr. Brown and I can come to an amicable solution. We've had a little bit of conversation, and as I had mentioned to them, to him and also to the press, you know, my goal is to not look at all the rhetoric going back, you know, the things that were said. I wanna look going to the future. We're, we'll have a long working relationship with the county, and I think moving forward, I think the goal of this council is to come to a solution that we all can, can agree with and that we can provide the best service to our citizens. I mean, the goal is that citizens of Sebastian are also county residents, and we just wanna provide those services. So, that's, that's where that's, it looks like it's headed. So, nothing happens until the county adopts the dispute resolution.
All right. And with that, I can, I can tell the, the council members that I have been in personal discussions with Chairman O'Brien about this issue, and he only wants what's best for Sebastian, and so, a lot of things were ginned up with the rhetoric that was going on over several months between our staff and their staff, and, you know, just some things were being said publicly that were, were inappropriate. So, I believe that, that the county wants to find a reasonable solution to this and go forward and, and make this thing what it's supposed to be, provide a, a level of service to our citizens that they require. Anything further?
And I had an opportunity to attend, along with council members, the belated Memorial Day celebration. I thought that was very well. Went to the VFW and broke bread with them and had some, had a good time, good discussions with them, and look forward to working with them also on the Fourth of July parade. And with that, that's all I have, unless you have questions for me, Mr. Mayor, counsel.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for the city manager at this point? Ms. Williams?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I have nothing further to add. Ms. Kitchen?
I have nothing tonight, except everyone enjoy the Fourth of July.
Amen to that. Councilmember Dodd?
Be safe, please.
Yeah. Just one thing. Can you give us a quick update on the golf course restaurant discussions that are taking place?
Yeah. Mr. Dodd, I had a couple, I mean, Councilmember Dodd, I've had a couple meetings with the tenant, and it appears that we're not going to come with a solution that he will agree to. He would like to see us give him some additional time to, to be successful with rent, and I think the direction of the city council was not to provide any additional free rent. I asked the, Mr. Wesley to bring me some documents. He, he has alleged he's put a lot of money into that restaurant, so I've asked him to bring those documents to me. The city attorney and I are gonna review those. I've had staff look at that and try to look and see what's there, and so, we'll be working through that, but it looks like the, the avenue is gonna be to negotiate termination of the lease at this time.
Okay. I, I bring that up because I'm, I'm not sure exactly what the mechanics of it are, but I'd kinda like to recommend to the council that we suspend the normal procedure for purchasing on this, and we allow the city manager and, and city attorney to approach the second bidder on the original RFP, under the guise of the original RFP, and negotiate a lease, instead of having to go out through the whole process of re-RFP-ing it and going through the whole thing. And I don't know whether that has to be an agenda item that we vote on or how we can do that.
What, what I would recommend, since we do have right now an existing contract with Mr. Campbell, I would say, direct us to, to see how that needs to be wrapped up first and let us come back with a recommendation. And if counsel is amenable to that, there is a provision, as you all know, in our procurement code that says that we can waive that process, and for expediency's sake, that would probably be a recommendation.
Yeah. 'Cause I mean, if it's six weeks before we get through this process, we're gonna be running into the fall golf season very quickly, and so, if we can negotiate something with the second bidder on that and get him, you know, get something done a lot quicker than it would be if we have to go through the full purchasing process on that.
Hear with that.
That's, that's all I've got.
All right. Mr. Avino.
He's never gonna get it right.
I'll get it right one day. How many meetings have we had, Jim? Councilmember.
Thank you. You know what? Let's just stick with that. That works. I don't have...
Say councilmember Al.
That's right. Thank you very much. Mr. McPartlin?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you. There being no further business, we are adjourned.